Chris and Richie Associates. And we do have the package. Mr. Brock?
Yes, ma'am. On December 9, 2014, the Planning Commission approved granting conditional approval for the preliminary subdivision, subject to the conditions contained in the technical staff report, for a five-unit subdivision. The applicant is requesting an extension of the preliminary plan in order to file the final plat. In order to do that, there are five conditions that must be met. The request was filed on November 2, 2015, which is prior to the expiration of the December 9, 2015, expiration of the preliminary plat. Preliminary plat is unchanged from the December 9, 2014 approved plat. And the applicant states the extension is necessary as the owner was not able to arrange for financing for the development within a 12-month period. The applicant stated that a funding partner has not been forthcoming, and additional time is needed to attain funding and a final record plat prepared. The subdivision is for five residential lots. If an extension is granted, the expiration date will be moved till December 9, 2016, and there are no other extensions are provided for in the subdivision regulations. Staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the request for an extension for the Millbrook subdivision, as it meets the condition criteria for extensions required by the Unified Land Development Code.
Thank you. That concludes your opinion. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Just one, Madam Chair. I've read a couple places in here about the five residential lots, but in fact, it's four and one forest conservation lot.
Forest conservation, that's correct.
Maybe the couple places I've seen it, maybe it could be worded that way, that instead of five residential lots, that is four residential lots plus one forest conservation lot. It confused me a couple of times when I was reading it. I had to go back and make sure it was four and not five.
You're correct. It's four residential, and the fifth is because of the slope and the forestation requirement. It is a lot that will be left in its current condition.
Thank you.
Is it, are we okay to make that change throughout, or a note to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any other questions? I'd like to open the public hearing. I do not have anyone currently signed up on Agenda Item 3, 4, 5, or 6 relating to this. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this agenda item? If you would please approach and state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Strang. My address is 16,000 Woodview Terrace. However, I also have bought property on Brooklyn Bridge Road adjacent to this plat. I came to the meeting last year. I was very upset because I had not had any notice until the sign went up that this, what I thought was a dedicated piece of woodlands was now going to be built upon. And I owned a property, not adjacent, but next to it. In the ensuing year, I have bought two more properties, including the one adjacent to it, in an attempt to preserve woodlands, to preserve Laurel, you know, and with the meeting in Paris worldwide, trying to preserve our environment. I don't see any need for more houses right there, and I'm willing to purchase the property if the company that now owns it would allow me to do that and keep it as it is. I'm trying to develop a forest conservation reserve there. I now own three properties. I would like to also own that one, if they're willing to do that, and not build anything else. The water, they put the little pink things down on the stream that's below, trying to conserve that. Any building is going to mess that up. Our wild places are disappearing quickly, and I would like to do anything that I can to prevent it. So I don't, you know, I've come at this process very late, but I'm doing what I can. So I now own the three. There's Jacob's property, then there's the Woods', which should have been Woods in perpetuity. Then there's the Bond property, which I just purchased last month, and he thought that was going to be Woods in perpetuity. I own the one next to that, which was the Athe property, and then the one adjacent to that, which I bought from Donna Hill. I don't recall the name of the woman that originally owned it, although I am trying to get as much history about the area as I can. I've met the grandson of the Athe's. I have pictures of that property. I'm trying to, you know, get historic stuff from the others. It's, most of the people have passed away, so it's somewhat difficult to go through the actual owners. Anyway, that's my plan. If there's any way you can help me to accomplish that, I don't have unlimited funds, but I think that they would be best served in contiguous properties. I do have possibilities of others on either side of the road. I really think that what's there should be preserved. It should have never been built on anyway, with the tuxent there and then all the tributaries on, it should have been preserved. WSSC had a lot of it, you know, little bits that went away. Two of the houses I own were built in the 30s, and all they had was a little tiny, tiny house, not a big drain on the land, and far enough from any of the water to keep it from being a problem. But any further development is really going to be a problem.
Thank you. What is that, thank you very much. I believe the applicant is probably also here tonight. What is before us as a commission tonight is just a request for an extension in terms of the building, or anything like that, correct?
It's a request for an extension of the preliminary plat.
Correct.
They would have to come back within 12 months with a final plat, should they proceed.
So you do have more time, if there is time that you would like to speak to someone, you know, to speak to those that are doing it. Not, not here in terms of, I mean, potentially outside of the meeting, but we, thank you very much for coming and voicing your-
What would it take to not approve the extension?
Mr. Wilson?
I mean, we have to, we have to operate within, within the law. We wouldn't have any grounds to not approve the extension.
Well, last year when I was here, the building was supposed to start in February, and when it didn't, I was hoping that we had dodged a bullet. Nothing has happened, which is great. Is there any that-
So there's provisions in the law for one extension, and I understand that there's no more extensions after that, right?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So this is just a rubber stamp?
Well, it's not a rubber stamp, but it's, we have to follow the law. We wouldn't have any grounds.
Well, then what can we do to stop it? If it's not a rubber stamp, how do we stop it?
I don't have any grounds to stop it.
What would grounds be?
Something, some technical problem in the, in the, in the report. There's no technical reason. So if we did stop it arbitrarily, then we go to court, and the landowner goes, "You denied me the use of my land."
Okay.
So then the city gets sued.
So it's some legal-
You gotta have, you gotta have a reason. We've already approved the development.
Correct. And then next step will be the plat within 12 months, but that, so we have just this one extension that we're looking at here.
Okay. So what would you suggest to me?
Well, if you want to make them an offer, it looks like they're having a hard time finding, finding financing, but you gotta do that outside of this meeting.
He's looking out here.
I don't know who's here.
I'm a representative.
But we, that's a private deal between you guys.
So is there any, any other advice you can give me?
No, other than, as what you're doing, if you want to reach out to them and, and see how that goes, but stay, stay a part of the process. The next step, and with, within 12 months, will be bringing us the plat and us reviewing that. And if you've watched what we have been doing over the past year, we do pay very close attention to what's brought to us and things like that.
I'm concerned about that, because when I was here last year, and I got very upset, because I was, you may remember.
I remember.
I was told that I would be on the list to receive any further mailings. I had gotten zipped. So I didn't know what was going on until I saw this itty-bitty little sign go up. Last year, at least, there was a big sign, but there's this sign, you know, it's about this big, saying that the meeting would be tonight. So how do I make sure that I know what's going on? Is there some, you know, I haven't gotten one piece of mail.
I, I don't know that the rules would have required a notification for a request for extension.
For an extension, no.
No. There is, maybe I recommend following up with the, the city planning office to find out the, again, there's still a lot of process left. Sarah, is there a number that she could have, that she could understand, find out the rest of the process? Because again, there's still a long process to go, and find out what parts you will be notified at, or what things you should look at, if it's not a requirement for notification.
You would, you would only be notified if you're, if you own property that's actually contiguous to this property?
I do.
Okay.
Now, I didn't then, but I was assured by whoever it was that I talked to.
But this is just an extension of what was already approved? So they, this, their plat was approved before, and they, it just wasn't recorded.
They didn't file a final?
They didn't file the final, so it, this is-
My concern is, I was told I would be notified of anything concerning that piece of property, and I didn't get anything. So how do I know to trust that this is going to happen? Who can I bug to find out information?
Well, if you own property now that's contiguous, you'll automatically get a notice.
But I was told, even though I lived, my, my original property is down the street, that I would be notified of everything, that I was now on the list of property owners. And I didn't, all I can go by is what's, what's happened. And the promise was not fulfilled. So now I'm asking, what can I do? Who should I call? What do I do to make sure, follow up, so this doesn't happen to me again, where here I am, one year later, still in the dark? What do I need to do so that I will know what's going on?
Well, I can give you my contact information, then you'll, you know, if you want to, I can get in touch with you, or you can give me your contact information, so the next time-
That happened last year. A young man bought the lot, and he sent me stuff from the meeting, and that was the end of that.
Let me ask that we go ahead and take this offline. We do want to have you notified. There will always, one of the requirements is, there will always be a posted sign, and that, is it really only that big? I've never seen one of our planning commission signs that date for notice.
They've changed.
This year was this, last year was this big. This is really quite insufficient, especially since I hadn't gotten any, anything prior.
Thank you. Okay. Do you can come over? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for the public hearing? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing on the application. And if there, are there any questions for the representative or the applicant among the council, the members here? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairwoman, I will move that we approve, let me get the right word in here. We approve the preliminary subdivision plan approval extension request for Millbrook Woods on Dorset Road, filed by Brookfield Washington LLC, and the Resolution 15-23-PC, with the adjustment of four residential lots plus a forestry lot.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Green, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Rofford?
Yes.
Mr. Kesch?
Yes.
Chairwoman Batman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item 7, Final Condominium Plat, Sandy Spring Village, 312 Sandy Spring Road, filed by Legend Builders Incorporated. Mr. Brock?
Yes, ma'am. On May 27, 2015, the mayor and city council approved ordinance number 1837, map amendment number 847, which rezoned this property 1.44 acres from R18, medium density, to R20, single-family, single-family detached, two-family detached, and one-family triple-attached. That's enabled this applicant to apply for a 12-unit condominium duplex project. The applicant is requesting final condominium plat approval to create 12 buildable lots for the construction of six duplexes. In addition, the applicant has proposed the construction of a private common area to provide off-street parking and to serve, service the lots. Mayor and city council approve map amendment number 1837, rezoning 312 from R18 to R20. The minimum lot size shall be 3,500 square feet, the minimum lot 30-foot width, front setback shall be 25, rear 20, side in units nine. Maximum building height is two and a half stories. Lot coverage is 30%, and the minimum green space is 65%. One of the requirements was that the traffic impact study be provided. That has not been received as of this date. Additionally, at your place, there should be a amended staff report and a resolution adding to the recommendation. Approve the application for the final condominium plat lots 20, block 3, Sandy Village Condominium, Declaration of Condominium, Articles of Incorporation, and Bylaws of the Sandy Spring Village Condominium in accordance with the above analysis. We have not received that either. So if it is your inclination to approve this, I would recommend, recommend that it be conditioned upon the approval by staff of the traffic impact and the condominium document approval by the city attorney. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
So, the traffic study, I'm, I'm okay, right? I mean, we don't expect anything crazy, just add 12 to Sandy Spring Road. But tell me about the condominium section.
This is a condominium because it's kind of front on a common, common area for the parking. However, each lot will be on its own, I mean, each residential unit will be on its own separate lot. And there are common areas for the parking and common areas for the stormwater. Those are covered by the condominium documents, which are normally approved at the same time that the condominium plat is approved. There was some back and forth exchange between the property owner and their attorneys and our attorneys. I think there were just some final details that needed to be brought back to the city. So if that's-
Look, let me ask you, just to follow on to that, I appreciate that explanation. So if I could ask Mr. Manzi. Mr. Manzi, is, in your opinion, there's nothing that's going to be a, kind of a subjective judgment calling that, once the, the guys that have the meter running get, get done with your work, that, as far as this body's concerned, I'm, I'm trying to understand the risk of not approving this all-in-one package. Do you see any, other than some, I mean, the fact is, there's going to be some common owned property, and that's what's handled in the condo?
That's, that's basically it. I submitted back to them some rewritten language dealing with a couple of the issues that I had in the covenants, one of which was, they wanted a waiver of all payments of lots that are under ownership of the builder. And having done several hundred of these in my private practice, I felt that was unreasonable, so I inserted that the builder would pay 50% of the condo fees until the lots were sold. That's it, that, that way you are funding the homeowners association, which the covenants is giving all the responsibility for maintaining the property.
So my understanding is that, that parking lot, that common area, will be owned by the condo association?
Yes.
It will be maintained by the condo association. There'll be no, in effect, impact back to the city.
That's correct.
Except to handle any complaints sometime down the-
Right. The yards, everything will, the entranceway, everything will be handled by the condominium association. But you can't do that unless you fund it. So I was hopeful they would be here this evening, but at, at this point, from my standpoint, from legal standpoint, I don't know that we, that I would approve anything other than what I sent back to them. So if you approved it this evening, what you'd approve would be the version which we have sent to them, which includes my amendments.
Okay. Could I, for clarification, before we have a motion, the two things that we do not have, that we would want staff approval on, one was the traffic study. What is the wording on the second that we do not have?
You do not have a response from them regarding the changes made to the condominium
So we would want staff condominium-
Give the right to staff to approve it. If, if we're all comfortable that it'll just be technical things, and that there wouldn't be anything that we would need a subjective decision on, I'm, I'm okay with that, just as long as I'm getting a head nod, and that way we can move this along. And there was one other question I have, just a separate. There was, when we saw this the first time, there was an issue with the, I think it's the curb cut, and has that been?
That was resolved by the Public Works Department and the applicant.
So we're, we're good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
I think once they decided to take the house down, that was the resolution for that, and I think you weren't here for that one. I think that's, that's how that one was resolved. I, I do not have anyone currently signed up to speak for this agenda item. However, I would like to open the public hearing on the final condominium plat, Sandy Spring Village, 312 Sandy Spring Road. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing and move for final action by the Planning Commission.
Okay. If I find my sheet. Here we go. I will move to approve the final plat, final record plat for West Side Townhouse, is that the right one? No.
I'm going to actually give you this, right, from the recommendation, the revised one?
Yeah. Final condominium plat, lot 20, block 3 of Sandy Spring Village Condominium, and Declaration of Condominium, Articles of Incorporations, and Bylaws of the Sandy Spring Village Condominium, to approve that, and there's a Resolution 15-13-PC.
And you wanted to include?
Include the revised staff report.
And the two conditions?
And the two conditions, thank you.
Sorry.
Drink water, so I can keep talking.
Sorry.
And, and the two conditions on the traffic study and the condominium bylaws.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
The resolution number is 15-24. No. The resolution number is 15-24-PC.
It's not 15?
Number 10.
Number 10, I'm sorry, no. Oh, yeah, 1524-PC, I'm apologizing.
And we have a second. Ms. Green, if you would call the roll, please. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rofford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Batman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, Final Record Plat, West Side Townhouses, West Side Boulevard, Parcels F, G, and H, filed by Strip Matter Land LLC. Mr. Brock?
Yes, ma'am. The applicant is requesting final subdivision plat approval to create 56 buildable lots for the construction of townhouses. In addition, the applicant is proposing the construction of a private road to serve the lots. The property is 7.3 acres. Property was annexed into the city in July 23, 2012, and became effective July, September 6, 2012. This strip matter property is MXT. A concept plan was approved by the city by City Ordinance 1764. On June, January 28, 2013, the concept site plan includes 500 residential multifamily units and up to 80 residential townhomes, a 150-room hotel, up to 200,000 square foot of commercial retail space in the West Side Boulevard. The multifamily is currently under construction. Although they were approved for 80 units, they are only going to build 56 units. On November 10, 2015, the City Council of Prince George's County, Maryland, sitting as the district council, approved county resolution 77-2015. The purpose of the resolution was to provide a waiver in accordance with the state law, the five-year restriction on municipal zoning and development of annexed land, and approving the proposed development of land annexed by the city with substantial different uses or at a substantially higher density and could be granted for the development pursuant to its pre-annexation zone classification of the property. And that allows the loan, the land to be used as it's currently zoned. Each of the 56 slots will meet the following requirements. Minimum lot width, 29.5 for the in-units and 22 feet for the interior units. Front setback 20 feet, rear setback 10 feet, side yard in-unit 4 feet. Building height, 43 feet, measured at the average grade along the front of the building. The maximum floor ratio is 1.2, FAR, which is allowed under the optional development of the MXT. The maximum floor area is 62,000 square feet, and the maximum that is proposed is 62,000 square feet, which is under the 1.2, which is .22 FAR. It is recommended that the Planning Commission approve the application for the final subdivision plat, West Side Lots 1 through 56, Parcels F and G, in accordance with the above analysis and the Department of Public Works recommendations.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Brock?
Oh, and parcel H.
Partial H, yes. F, G, and H. Mr. Wilson?
Do you know, Mr. Brock, if the fire department has had a chance to look at this in terms of being able to move equipment up and down there? Those, those streets are really tight. Did we get a response back from the fire department?
Yes, they reviewed it and had no comments.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, I'd like to open the public hearing on the final record plat, West Side Townhouses, West Side Boulevard, Parcels F, G, and H. I do have one person signed up, maybe the applicant. Welcome, if you would please. Mr. Haller? Haller? If you would state your name and address, please, welcome.
Well, thank you very much. Chairwoman Batman, members of the commission, Thomas Haller, on behalf of the applicant. I'm here with the applicant, just to answer any questions that you might ask. We support the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Hearing none, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to final action by the commission. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the final record plat, West Side Townhouses, West Side Boulevard, parcels F, G, and H, and to include the action on resolution number 15-13-PC.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Green, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
I don't know.
Chairwoman Batman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, final record plat, Hawthorne Place, 9007 Marshall Avenue, filed by C.S. Hawthorne LLC.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The applicant is proposing to seek subdivision record plat approval. This was approved in 2008. As you know, it expires, so they're coming back to the planning commission and they would like to create six parcels as opposed to eight. And for the project known as Hawthorne Place, where it's going to be a mixed-use development with 1,006 residential units, onsite parking, office space, as well as a little bit of Therefore, I recommend that this be, that the planning commission approve the final record plat to create six parcels as opposed to eight with the conditions listed in the technical staff report.
For, just for the public notice, would you go through the conditions just on the recommendation, please?
Yes. The conditions listed in the technical staff report include the applicant shall have the record plat recorded among Prince George's County land records within 180 days of approval. The applicant shall submit an address and plan depicting each building, floor, and unit numbers for review and approval by the City of Laurel Department of Community Planning and Business Services prior to submitting application for building permits. In the final one, the applicant shall adhere to the conditions outlined in ordinance number 1853, concept overlay plan application, R01-2, 2015 application, and Phase 1 final overlay site and landscape plan application, R01-3, 2015 approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? I do not have anyone signed up for this. I'd like to open the public hearing on the final record plat, Hawthorne Place, 9007 Marshall Avenue, filed by C.S. Hawthorne LLC. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move for final action by the commission.
Madam Chair, I will move, I will move to approve final record plat for Hawthorne Place, 9007 Marshall Avenue, and the related resolution 15-25-PC.
Ms. Green, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Batman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item 19, variance application number 857, 106 Lafayette Avenue, filed by R.L. Thompson Electric for recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Mr. Brock?
Yes, ma'am. R.L. Thompson Electric filed their variance application number 857 to remove their existing contractor's office and building and constructing a new building at 106 Lafayette Avenue, Zone IG Industrial General. The following variances are requested. Presently, the lot is .31 acres. It is required that one acre in size for a IG lot. Also, it requires 200 feet at the lot width. The current lot width is 71.25 feet. The requirement for lot coverage is not more than 40%. They are not exceeding 30%. The maximum green space is required to be 20%. They are providing 29%. Because of the narrowness and the size of the lot, they're requesting a variance to the front parking lot of 29.42 feet. Requirement is 100 feet. The parking lot is an existing parking lot. Setback from side lot line, requirement is 25 feet. They're requesting 18 feet on one side and 7.76 on the other. Setback from the parking lot is 10 feet. This is also existing and is one foot or a nine-foot variance. Setbacks from the rear property line, 50 feet. They're requesting 30 feet. And from the parking lot line, 10 feet. And they're providing 31.93 feet. So they're not requesting a variance on that. The existing building was built in 1947. The building is approximately 1,500 square feet. The parcel was not created through a record plat. The parcel is approximately 1,300 square feet or 1/3 acre and is 71.2 feet wide at the front property line. Industrial general site requirements require one acre and a lot width of 200. Proposed building will be 400 feet wide by 100 feet deep or 4,000 square feet. The proposed height is 18 feet. The applicant seeks to continue the electrical business in behalf of the new building and lease the back portion. The conditions, by reason of the lot size, 1/3 lot, 1/3 of an acre, a lot width of 71.25 feet, and a topography, the lot is lower than contiguous lots. The strict application of the IG site requirements would result in unusual practical difficulties and undue hardship upon the owner to construct a replacement building. The surveyor representing the applicant wrote that the property's size has not changed since it was constructed in 1947. Because the parcel's size is .31 acres, it is not possible to meet the IG zoning development standards. Condition two, the existing lot size, lot width, building front yard setback, building side, south side setback, parking lot front, parking lot side are not changed. The building north side yard setback is necessary in order to improve rear yard driving aisle access while increasing the space between the north adjacent building. The proposed building will be 20 feet from the north side property line in contrast to the existing building, which is 11 feet from the north side property line. There will be 130 feet of space between the proposed building and the building to the Condition three, the intent of the master plan for this neighborhood is promoted through the removal of a 68-year-old building and construction of a replacement building for continued industrial use. The redevelopment will retain an existing electrical contract business and allow a second business to operate in compliance with the zoning. In condition four, the variance will not bring, will not bring a new building closer to the property line to the front of the side property lines. There will be 130 feet of space between the proposed building and the building to the east. The property is surrounded by industrial zone and land use. Staff recommends that the City of Laurel Planning Commission recommend approval to the City of Laurel Board of Appeals for variance application number 857, as it meets the criteria for a variance.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Any questions for staff?
Just a quick one. Mr. Brock, the conditions that are included in Public Works and their memo get attached to your report as a condition if we approve this. There's a couple of things in there, they're fairly minor, about the commercial driveway apron, replacing it and all that. That'll get included by reference.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just so we don't lose it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have one person signed up, Mr. John Thompson, 106 Lafayette. Did you want to speak or just answer questions?
I am here for your questions. I'm going to keep going. Thank you.
Are you in agreement with the staff report?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Okay. We, since this is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals, there is no public hearing. And I have no, whoops, I'm sorry. I do have one other person signed up for this. Excuse me. Mr. Benefield. Thank you. I'm sorry. I almost missed that.
That's okay. I'm used to it. My name's Gray Benefield. I'm with Surveying Inc., the engineer of the project. And I do agree with Mr. the staff recommendation. He basically said everything that makes sense. But basically, in a nutshell, it's a, it's a brick home in the middle of a steel building. So basically, right now, it does not conform with any neighborhood character. What we're trying to do is get it to conform with the neighborhood character. He's been, I guess, had the business of law for 40 years, and it's time to expand. You get, you know, he's been working a business out of a one and a half square Cape Cod house. It's time to build a workshop. That's all. And any other questions you might have?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do not have anyone else signed up. Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I will move to approve the variance application number 857 for 106 Lafayette Avenue, R.L. Thompson Electric, for recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Madam Chairman, I'm, sorry, go ahead.
I'll second that, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Green, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Batman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck. Appreciate the investment.
Yes. Agenda item 20, variance application number 858, 15001 Baltimore Avenue, filed by Nirmala Corporation for recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Mr. Brock?
LTC Corporation filed variance application number 858 to demolish the vacant building and construct a multi-tenant building named Laurel Square at 15001 Baltimore Avenue. A five-foot rear building setback variance is requested to locate the building five feet from the property line. The property is located at the south corner of Baltimore Avenue and Marshall Avenue. It is adjacent to Stagger's Road and the former Laurel Station Bar and Grill. The parcel is approximately 25,000 square feet on 1/2 of an acre. The Laurel Mexican Mark was the previous tenant of the existing building, which was constructed in 1964. The existing building is approximately 2,000 square feet. The proposed building is 5,000 square feet. The maximum height in the CG zone is 35 feet. And a multi-tenant shopping center proposes a bank, a carryout, convenience, medical office, as the tenant will be determined by the parking formula. Conditions of variance, by reason of an exceptionally irregular shape of the specific parcel and by reason of topography, conditions of a steep slope along the rear of the property line, the strict application of these regulations would result in unusual practical difficulties to the owner who seeks to demolish the vacant 64, 1964 building and construct a new building to city code. Condition two, the proposed building meets the front side building setback standards, making the rear setback variance the minimum reasonable necessary to overcome the conditions of the rear slope. Condition three, the variance promotes master plan goal five, which is to provide for and promote a balanced economy with a mix of office, retail, industrial uses in order to ensure continued physical well-being and to provide employment opportunities for the city residents. The property is also located between the Town Center and Hawthorne Place, which are two areas designated and approved for high-intensity redevelopment through the revitalization center overlay, R01. Condition four, the area behind the proposed building is adjacent to an access driveway would have a minimum impact on the southern adjacent property. The property is surrounded by zoning district CG, Commercial General, and IG Industrial General. Staff recommends the City of Laurel Planning Commission recommend approval to the City of Laurel Board of Appeals for variance number 858, as it meets the various criteria. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Are there any questions for staff? I do have one person signed up, Mr. Steve Zaberry, LTC Corporation. Did you want to speak or are you here just to answer questions?
If anybody had any questions?
Thank you. Welcome. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I will move to approve the variance application number 858 for 15001 Baltimore Avenue, filed by Nirmala Corporation for recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Kish? Ms. Green?
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Batman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and good luck with that. Agenda item 21, parking modification application, 385 Main Street, filed by Ragamuffins LLC. Mr. Brock?
The applicant is seeking approval of a parking waiver for the property located at 385 Main Street to operate a coffee shop with a seating of 805 square feet, a 100-square foot office, and two existing apartments. The Main Street corridor is in an area that has limited parking, is in a parking modification zone. The lower level or the basement is proposed for storage and lounge area to be used for an overflow coffeehouse seating. The applicant plans to remodel the ground level to construct bathrooms, a kitchen, coffee service bar, and seating area. There are currently two apartments on the upper level of the subject property. There are, there is only one door accessible to the lower level. Section 12-16.6C, joint use of parking facilities provides that a building occupied by one use shall provide the off-street parking as required for the specific use. Except in the MXT or revitalization overlay, a building or group of buildings occupied by two or more uses operating during normal working hours shall provide space for not less than the sum of the space required for each. The parking schedule requires for a multifamily dwelling efficiency, one-bedroom apartment, 1.75 spaces. There are two apartments that exist, which would be 3.5 spaces. Coffee shop is 805 square feet. It requires one space per 100 square feet, which is an additional eight spaces. And the coffee shop office is 100 square feet, which would require a .5 space, which would be a total of 12 spaces. The applicant is requesting a waiver of six spaces, as there are six spaces available to them behind the building. The applicant is requesting the parking modification under 20-16.06, modification of requirements, hardship, practical difficulties. These regulations regarding area, yard, parking setbacks may be modified by the planning commission on a specific lot or lots. Structure or use is located in a specifically established commercial area where the Mary and City Council has resolved after a public hearing that practical difficulties and possible undue hardship prevents the strict adherence to the requirements. The master plan identifies the Main Street area as a parking modification zone. Critical, critical to its condition, continued viability of Main Street as a business district is the is the availability of parking. A lower threshold, a provision of vehicular access to the corridor must be sustained. Efforts should continue to help property owners provide parking on-site when appropriate, maintaining as much free street parking as possible, and pursue efforts to provide public off-street parking. And that is from the master plan, City Ordinance sixteen forty-seven. It is recommended that the Planning Commission approve the parking modification application as permitting two land uses, two apartments, and coffee shop slash office at three eight five Main Street as provided for this, in the city master plan and the Unified Land Development Code. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Do we have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Brock, maybe you can't tell me yet, but I'm, I'm curious, is, will this property be deemed, will it be taxable by the city?
Yes.
So it'll be taxable?
Yes, it's for commercial use, therefore it's taxable.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I have two people signed up to speak. Would you like to speak or here to?
We're here to answer questions.
Answer questions? Okay. Are, any questions for the applicants? We have two people here. John, any questions for the applicant? Okay, I just had one. What hours are you looking to, to be open? I'm sorry, if you could state your name, please?
I'm in Tyneside, residing at three eight five Main Street. We've done some research, probably visited thirty coffee houses in DC and multiple regions, some in Philadelphia. What we'd like to do is think more of the evening and activities that are fun around coffee, more toward ten o'clock at night if possible. But beginning a new business means we need to train people and we need to have staff in order to cover all those bases. So we haven't pinned down any hours of operation yet, but we'd like to have something fun on Main Street for people who reside in nearby apartments or the new C Street flats or those kinds of things.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the parking waiver, trying to find my sheet. Oh, thank you. Parking modification, three eighty-five Main Street filed by Ragamuffins LLC and the related resolution fifteen dash twenty-six PC.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Green?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Batman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. We have no other business. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.